Good evening, Mary. How are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody ever said that.
We have to meet here. I think we need that.
Johnny Novia. If he shows up. He made me overwork. So he got, he got around.
That was the reason. Now for sure, so somebody already bought. Do you want to think it was bought by somebody that had? Yes. Yes, 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 I know how you're talking about. Yeah, he's, he bought. He bought. Somebody, and I know. Listen to him too. This is the guy that bought.
We don't make it. We don't have no credit. They change that.
Didn't mark it. Yep. He bought it. We see this. I'm sure for the hour. He got it on. He got it on. How about they was? He bought this. Well, the guy that bought it, the one back in the corner there. He called out, he insinuated that we're in.
I don't believe.
I somebody. I don't hear us up there.
I'll borrow yours for just a second.
When he shows up, it's Johnny's.
That's right.
He's overworked, unpaid.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting.
John, listen over here just a second. I just want to know. I'm gonna start with Richie Botterford and Doug Godfrey. Uh, we'll speak upon our January twenty twenty-three renewal of our insurance. Do you wanna come forward?
Since you said my name first.
It's right up here.
Come stand here. First of all, let me thank you guys for allowing us to be your insurance advisor agent for the last several years. Uh, before you, y'all ask me any questions, I'll, I'll say this, you know, Doug and I had talked about this. Doug does utility department's insurance and I do the cities. Uh, and I feel like it's working out real good for the last few years. Angie, Angie here?
She will be.
Okay. Well, we work hand in hand with Angie all the time regarding the benefits. She does a real good job on her side, you know, taking care of the benefits. But as far as, as the group health insurance renewal is concerned, uh, you know, the city of Selmer and the utility department has by far the best benefits of any group that I have, including better than my group insurance, better than my wife's group insurance. It's phenomenal coverage. I don't know if anybody's got any better. Uh, they've got zero deductible, eight hundred dollar max out of pocket. Uh, I don't know if anybody's got that unless you're on like a Medicare supplement or something. And even then, there's some doughnut holes and things like that. But as far as group insurance, it's just really, really good coverage. Bad thing is, is this year it did take an increase. It's eleven percent. No increase is good, but it's a lot better than almost every other group that I had this year. There she is. I was just bragging on you and you missed it. You can ask them to tell you. I'll say it later on. I said how well you work on the benefit side. Angie stays on top of all this and makes changes and calls us if anything happens and almost. And I think you'll attest rarely the last few years has there been any kind of issues. So, uh.
I have a whole bunch of happy employees and I'd like to keep you that way please.
Well, that, that's good. That's, that's what we like. And I was telling them, group insurance is a lot better than the benefits I've got, a lot better than the benefits my wife has who's on the state plan. So, uh, having said that, I think y'all had a copy of this package. Do you guys have any questions from here for Doug?
I do.
Sure?
Um, as far as our policy goes, do we have any coverage that, um, covers like counseling or that sort of thing? Maybe therapy or something like that?
There is covers of Blue Cross Blue Shield for that. If you're talking about like mental counseling and things like that. I, I'd have to get pull that specific one to let you know exactly what the coverages are on that. There is coverage on everybody's group policy now.
Right, okay.
Are we driving you crazy?
No.
Are you, are you speaking about Johnny specifically there?
Could be, could be. My thought on that was if we didn't already have coverage, if we could get coverage on that and, um, maybe set up a fund for the out of pocket expense so that we can offer that low cost to all of our EMS.
I'm almost positive that that is, and I have to look, but I mean, it is, it is made to the point where it's, if it's not free, it's, it's, it's close.
I just want to make sure that, you know, if, if any of our EMS wanted those services that they could have on, and it be at no cost to them and also it be at their discretion, not like a departmental supply type therapy. But you know, if they would like to talk to somebody, you know.
Well, the maximum out of pocket on anything right now for an individual for the town of Selmer is eight hundred dollars, which is again phenomenal. Uh, and as far as setting something up to reimburse that, you know, that would probably be outside the insurance portion of it that you'd have set that for.
No, I was just wondering if we had coverage and then if we do have coverage, we could set something up ourselves. That way, you know, if, if any of them wanted to partake in that.
Great idea. Good idea.
Then they could without having to be out of pocket.
We've actually got two groups. We've got the Federated Fire Chiefs, which is out of Oklahoma. It's Paul Trump or he is a chaplain.
Yeah.
He's been down here. We've also Lauderdale County Sheriff's Department of Alabama. They've been here and the police can use them too, so, you know.
The reason why I was more leaning towards that is because I wanted them to be able to have some anonymity about it, you know. Yeah, that way they could, they could, there's several dial in ones now that take insurance and that way the person could call in and it'd be covered. They just give them their number and then nobody else would have to know other than them. A lot of times, you know, somebody might want to talk to somebody, but they don't want anybody else to know that they were talking to somebody.
And that's where all those hotlines as far as that thing is, is concerned is set up.
I want to make sure that we had something that was an option, not going necessarily through a department or a federation or.
Now, I wouldn't know if anyone is used that because that's like you said.
I, I just want to make sure as far as on the insurance end, whenever they call them, give them their insurance card.
That's right.
That part would be fine.
I'm sorry? Mental health counseling?
No, the, the, this, that's, that document that we're supposed to give to, that we get once a year that's the something of benefits, the.
You, uh, explanation.
No, not the E O B.
The summary.
Summary.
Yeah.
I knew it was an S A.
That's all I.
That's all big.
Maybe we ought to get Johnny signed if that girl.
Both, both groups have the exact same coverage. I mean, if you guys want to ask Doug anything or me, else anything else, I mean, it's the same benefits for both groups. And the reason why these groups were split apart years ago and, and really I didn't think it would be able to be done, okay? Is because to break them out, you're both in a small group, okay? Instead of large group, that way your claims don't count nearly as bad against you to keep two individual groups. We've had years in the past where, man, you know, it's things happen. You have some really sick groups and that's the reason why those rate increases were bad in years past. So what's this about four years now they've been separate? My personal opinion, I think Doug would agree, it worked out much better that way as far as keeping rates now.
Yeah, and I, I even asked him, I said, okay, under the table, just out hypothetically, would it benefit us to go back together? Just, and he said, no.
No, I mean, we've had some, you know, you guys can know right now off topic here, we've had some really, really sick, high claims. So right now for sure, it would not have worked out for us. And, and the reason why they do these small groups like that, you know, and rate them that way is where, you know, get some, some group relief and lower rate increases for small groups. The bigger guys can handle the rate increases a little bit better.
Now, is that both of y'all are going up the.
Mine's eleven percent.
Mine's more like six, but it's still.
Last year mine was less.
But our rates are higher.
Still pays a little more than six. Yeah, okay.
There's no charge for mental health services, um, after, after deductible, which our out of pocket is only eight hundred dollars a year. So there's no fees, there's, you know, so it's, it's, it's pretty good. As opposed to like an ER, which is a five hundred dollar copay. So, so mental health is not treated that way at all.
So.
There's no copays for every time you call or anything like that.
So what's the, what's the split on it up until the eight hundred? Or is it all out of pocket till you get to eight hundred?
It is a, it's a fifty, fifty fifty split. Um, until you reach the eight hundred, but if they reach the eight hundred, then in anything like drugs or anything.
Full stop of that.
Who need, here, here, if we're gonna set up like a fund, it'd be four hundred per person.
It would just be a situation where you, there's not gonna be a set number because you don't know what the, you don't know where they're going. You don't know what kind of charges they're gonna have. You don't know what that employee has already spent. If the employee has already spent eight hundred dollars on other costs, it's not gonna cost them a dime anyway.
Yeah.
So it would have to be, it, it would have to be as a case by case basis. Now, if you set up a fund, that's fine, but it would still have to be reviewed and applied in a case by case basis kind of situation. And honestly, right now, the only person other than the insurance people, the only person besides Doug and Richie that see anything is me. And the only thing that I see is where, who the checks get written to. And that's it. I get a report, uh, every time the checks are dispersed.
Due to HIPAA.
Yeah, so, and I don't, I don't see anything, um, I don't, I don't see any kind of diagnosis or even, you know, what kind of, I, I see when they pay drug bills, but I don't see what the drugs are or anything like that. So I just see, you know, who the bills are paid to. So again, if this is something that y'all want to pursue, we can get some more information about how to set it up. But the way our insurance is and, um, as good as our insurance is, meaning an eight hundred dollar out of pocket, whether it's a drug or a copay or an ER or whatever, um, there's a very good chance that that eight hundred dollars could already be, uh, be covered. You could set it up to where it's up to eight hundred, but you still would just have to. I think there's, it's, it's complicated, but it's complicated for a good reason, I guess you could say.
I would, I would definitely like to pursue it if I would like to set up some kind of account like that or if it's even possible to do that.
I would have to ask somebody besides me.
Right.
But I do know you have.
Cities and counties and government municipalities are a little bit different. I, you know, I don't, I don't know that that would make any difference as far as your employees and group health insurance or something like that. But it's different than Richie Botterford's insurance and Doug Godfrey's insurance, you know, because there's just some different rules in cities and counties. But I would think you could figure something out if you wanted to, you know.
Yeah.
I would definitely like to pursue it. Like I said, I don't want, even whatever the financial barrier may be, I would, I don't, for that particular situation.
Well, your worst case is eight hundred dollars.
Right.
Probably, I mean, you know, but I, I don't think.
Per year.
And I don't think we would ever reach that.
No, no, you wouldn't. And, and then the other thing, I can, I know that the state has something like that that's set up because, uh, you know, Stacy gets the little stick magnets and everything wherever. So I can, you know, we can kind of look and see what kind of thing they have set up and, um, and what he, you know, if, if, if there's any cost, or even if you can, um, set it up to where, I don't know, if, if, if that's something that could be added, I don't, I don't know. We, we, we can look into it. I'm sure there's lots of options, but I don't know how you legally do it.
That, that's what I want to pursue there.
Uh, the last thing I'll say unless you got questions, me, department heads, remember the only problems we've ever really had was you got two insurance cards, okay? And those two insurance cards make it available, uh, for you to get these great benefits. Your pharmacist is right, man, make them always have your employees, the people who work for you say, use both cards. Because if you don't, that's the only time we ever get a hiccup, you know? And sometimes, you know, even if they give two cards, maybe whoever's filing or something may not do it and we may have to, Angie may have to send them back and let them do it. But there's been very few in the last few years we've even ran into that.
No, the only thing, you know, the only time we've had any issues at all is if it, if somebody accidentally uses it out of network. And then if it's out of.
The same way for everyone though.
You can't, you know, but I try to educate our people, you know, if you're going somewhere new, either call me and we'll look it up. If you do not want to call me, you know, if you don't want me to know where you're going, then that's fine. You can always call the number yourself on the back of the car just to make sure. And, and honestly, if you're getting, um, referred, the doctor or the doctor's office that is referring you ought to do that for you, but.
Sometimes they don't.
They don't. Sometimes they prefer going to somebody else and they may not be in network. So it's just, it, it takes the employee doing their own due diligence to make sure before they go to that new doctor.
And speaking of networks, Blue Cross Blue Shield is our main underlying company on this and they have, Doug and I think you would agree, we, I'm an independent agent. I represent Cigna and Aetna and Humana and everybody else, but Blue Cross Blue Shield no doubt has the best network we found. Would you agree?
Yes.
Yeah, we very seldom have anybody that goes out of network, but I mean, it, it does occasionally happen and just, that's the only issue we've ever had. As long as, you know, and, and all the employees know that they can come with me and we'll have ugly conversations, won't we? Most of the trouble, most trouble you have is with the provider, not the insurance. And once you get their attention, you know, if you will go ahead and file with that secondary insurance, you'll get paid, you know?
True.
So, um, but it usually works really well. Mr. Bobby, have anything?
Sounds good to me.
We'll let you, this time next year, you get to do all the talking. Thank y'all very much for using local agents. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Chief Hawley. He is going to speak on getting approval to start the bid process.
Well, I think I come to you last month and asked about the building next door. Several months ago, I went to Keith Freeman and asked Keith if he had looked at the building next door. And then since the last meeting, I went and talked to Didi Whitley and got Didi to look at the building. Well, both of them gave me a price about the same. It's just a general price between five and six hundred thousand. So the only way I know to do it now is just ask y'all's permission to bid. So I'm gonna try to get a little bit of a spec sheet out. Now, from looking at the building, I'm, I think I'm gonna have to rearrange the floor plan from where the sewer is actually running in. So we're not having to cut sewer lines underneath a wall, move the bathrooms from one side of the wall to the other. That's about the only thing. That's the only permission I'd like to sue, just take bids and see what they actually come out to. But both of them said between five and six hundred thousand on their rough estimate.
I would like to make sure that a bid packet specifies that the city reserves are out, not to be followed. In, in the event of, you know.
Well, yeah, I would expect that because, you know, they said five to six, but, I mean, it could be twice that much, I understand that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's specified that whoever the bidder is may actually not wind up getting, you know.
Yeah, because we may not do anything.
They may not be, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, right. But I don't know how else to do, to move forward if we don't at least.
Yeah, that's all the way.
Get a price. And then, and then we'll know.
Or we may have to reevaluate what all the projects going to entail.
Well, and, and I don't know that I've told, you know, my plan is to, to brick all the way around, you know, block up, brick around the front, paint the whole thing looking the same, you know? And then just build offices inside.
And I told him to make sure that everybody got a, a standard spec sheet because.
Right, that, that's the reason I'm gonna, you know, spec it out, that way you at least.
Cause everybody could interpret that situation totally different.
I think that's all I have on my.
Thank you. Next up is Ray O'Leary, Street Sanitation. He's gonna talk about recycling process going forward in twenty twenty-three.
I just, I don't know that I need to stand up, but, um, I just came to you and let you, let you folks know that a couple of months ago, our old, not the new leased garbage truck, but the old garbage truck we're using from recycling is giving us trouble. I had Mac come over, um, and look at it. He ran the codes on it, got the information and it's, seems to be the same old thing with it. The year of that truck was the first year they instituted a recovery recycling program for the emissions. And, um, and it was not very good the first year, so. Anyhow, uh, he reset, you know, found the parts that he needed to, uh, to fix the problem that was coming up on the computer. And as soon as that was done, he says, yeah, you can, um, you can use it now. And we tried using it and it's the same problem we were having previously. And what, what is happening is it's losing power. It's going into limp mode. He sits on the side of the road for ten, fifteen minutes. It resets. He goes down the road again for however long it lasts. And then, uh, meanwhile, this truck is going to Henderson with our recycling. I've talked to you folks about getting, um, trailers and eliminating that garbage truck once and for all. You asked me to get, uh, prices for you, which I did. There's several different, uh, well, getting back to the Mac, the, the person from Tri-State Mac that, um, came down and looked at the truck. I called them after we were broke down on the side of the road again. Luckily, we didn't need a tow because towing a truck that size gets very costly. Uh, he did make it back to the shop. I called Mac again. I said, what you did didn't make any difference at all. So he came down and found, uh, came down to test it again, which was a bill of about two thousand dollars, a little over that, twenty-one hundred, I think. And, um, found that it's, it's shorting out somewhere along the wiring harness on the backside of the motor. So he said he'd give me a price to do the, to do the, um, to do the wiring harness. He, that, uh, price came in at about fifty-six hundred dollars. Now, the history on this truck is when we went to pick it up in Ohio, Daniel and I, we broke down twice coming home. The history of this truck is, is not good. I mean, as soon as you fix one thing, the computer says it's done, something else is going on continuously. The reason why this is coming up now is we're going to have a rate increase from the recycling hub up to fifty dollars a ton. We're paying approximately thirty-two. Don't hold me to that, but I think that's what it is. Um, it's going up. So my question to you folks is, um, is, you know, the cost of the blue bags, the cost of the recycling going up. Uh, last time we ordered blue bags, it was a little over three thousand dollars a pallet. That lasted us for just over a year. Recycling's going up. They said it would be coming down by now, but nobody can predict the, the future. Do we want to continue recycling? That's my question to you folks, because if we do, we have to figure out a different way other than what we're doing now. I've got prices on trailers. The county just put a bid out and one trailer now, don't hold your, your stomach too bad. The price for one trailer at their bid price, they were bidding out three trailers, was thirteen thousand four hundred dollars for one trailer. Now, Steve, I talked to him at the recycling, uh, um, hub, not the hub, but over here at Solid Waste. And he says he also talked to another local welding shop that can get it down to about seventy-eight hundred. That's for one trailer. We need three to pick up recycling. My question is, do we want to continue to recycle? Do we want to, um, every, you know, prices were supposed to be coming back down by this time according to, and now she can't predict the future, but they're always telling you what they hope. If we continue to recycle, we'll definitely need, you know, do we want to get the gar, the garbage, uh, the recycled truck fixed? Do we want to go with, with, uh, with trailers? This is what I'm bringing to you folks.
How old is the truck?
The truck is a two thousand twelve.
And it was towed up when you got it?
Well, it sure looked pretty when we picked it up, but soon after that, it was probably the coldest night. And I'm from Connecticut, it was probably the coldest night. We were sitting on the side of the road. It took us a few days to get home, so. The truck, when it was bought, um, you know, nobody knew that two thousand twelve Macs were terrible with emissions and continually, you know, having problems with them. They just went on the internet and found a truck that was in their price range and, and, um, it made it a little way, a little ways from the place before we had trouble with it. So we turned it around or we bring it back and we did, you know, Thede decided to bring it down. But, you know, nobody knew the issues that were going on with the truck. It was just a used truck.
Can we get any money out of it to buy?
I believe, um, well, when we, when we leased the truck from Mac, the new one, not this one in particular, but the first time we did it. Mac, um, the salesman said he would, he would try to sell it for us because it wasn't, you know, we were having too much trouble using it every day for, for garbage. And apparently everybody knew that these were troubled trucks from the start, except, you know, us. But he, he tried to put it out there to see if he could sell it as a used, you know, piece of equipment and, uh, it just didn't go anywhere. So.
So if we don't do nothing with it, it'd be out there in the woods somewhere?
No, I'm sure we'll.
Say it was scrap metal or what?
You know, I, you know, I can't answer that. But, but, um, you know, we've sold them for scrap iron before. So, um, you know, somebody will.
Recycling is a service we'll have to try to continue.
No, if, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
To our citizens.
You know, we can, we. Yeah, we can try something different. You know, the town of, of Savannah doesn't have house residential pickup. They have the opportunity to bring it somewhere. We could try doing that here where that would free up a complete day for, for my department. You know, set a can aside and, and wait till it emptied a few times and wait till we can fill up three trailers and go from there. I would suspect that, you know, people would just put it back in their garbage cans and forget recycling. And we'd still be twelve dollars cheaper than what we're doing household garbage for now versus thirty-eight versus the fifty.
Do we make any money on it?
No, no, we, we have, we have never. Yeah, we have, I mean, it's, it's good to go green and to recycle and to be ecological, um, but we have never made any money off. It's always been a cost.
And it's looking like it's even more, gonna be more of a cost.
Well, yeah, rates are going up and we gotta figure out whether we're getting trailers or fixing the truck or.
And the bags.
And, and the bags for next year, that'll start again and, um, you know.
But I like the service. I use it. I fill up.
Yeah.
Every week.
Yeah, I do, I do as well. It's just, you know, whether.
Housely.
Yeah, it's just what we're gonna do financially, uh, as far as keeping it going. So you folks can talk about it. I'm, you know, I don't.
It sounds like the trailer's a, a whole hell lot better than that truck.
Well, the only thing that with the trailers is you gotta, you load it by hand, you unload it by hand. Friday is kind of a wash day with recycle anyway. We do the recycling, we're done by ten, ten-thirty in the morning. Um, we take it up there, um, and once a month, we're, we're dropping it off so that I have a total for you of how much we picked up. If we go with the trailers, it has to be done every week. Instead of sending one guy up there to get rid of the recycle, we're sending two people per truck because it's gotta be all unloaded by hand. Two people per truck, three trailers, six guys.
So what kind of trailer are you sending?
Well, we have, there's, um, there's several options we can go. I was, nothing was, nothing was put out to bid yet, but these, that's probably the, the best economical. You can pass it around if you want.
I think it's like the trailer you said already.
Yeah.
I was, I was thinking.
Oh, they left the ones of recycle.
You had, you had a total, that was a total cost. I was thinking per trailer.
That was total cost for. That was total cost for one trailer for them. Um the bid price that uh Solid Waste had received was thirteen thousand four hundred for one trailer like that, which is, which is unbelievable. Um then they talked to a local welding shop, they said, if we if we get our own trailers, can you fabricate us a cage to go on it? Um I got a price of just a, there's just a trailer. Um I did, if we decide to just go with trailers like these, um I had Daniel call up and get prices for um to build a trailer like what's going around, and he said for another fifteen hundred dollars on top of three thousand that we could have a recycled trailer. But it's cheaper than the one that's going around.
So looking at roughly, about eighteen grand for three trailers?
Um.
About that's?
Yeah, I would say.
So what if we went with a larger equipment style tilt trailer and then you got one van?
Um.
Like that, right there?
Yes, uh we want, that's seven by sixteen, these are six, six-ten by sixteen. I'd need three of those trailers and still build up the sides on it.
But would it eliminate one of the guys when they went to their dump at all?
Yeah, it would, it would.
Standard pockets on the sides already.
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's no question, it would eliminate by pushing a button, sure, absolutely.
You know, you can build sideboards and drop them in standard pockets for a nominal cost and make it however high of a side that you want it.
Yeah.
Long as you're under thirteen-six.
It's still, it's.
Again, you gotta have a truck to pull it.
Yeah, it's still the same size as. It's, it's still the same. It's still the same size as what what this trailer is here, almost. And whether you're having, you know, two guys unloading it or one guy, whether it's cost effective to get dump trailers, you know, I'm looking to save the city money. This is a a a money we're putting our, a hole we're putting our money into anyway. I'm looking to save the city some money. Cause Friday's kind of a wash day, like I said, you know, we do recycle, we'll tidy up a few loose ends that we've started during the week, but we never really get anything. And don't, don't get me wrong, we never, you know, it's just, it's a loose end day because of picking up um.
I was just looking at the.
Yeah.
Man hours times six, man every Friday.
Yeah, there's, well, you still have to have, you still have to have the guys collecting the the recycle.
Right.
So if I don't send them up there, that's a matter of uh three and a half hours. Um, you know, that's what you're looking at.
Three and a half times six.
No, three and a half times, oh, well, if you're driving up, there's a half an hour, driving back, one hour, half an hour to unload it, you know, it's, it's three guys, so, cause you still gotta have somebody jogging job. But anyway, I'm just letting you guys know um what's going on and we'll just go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Are the trucks we got decent enough to pull them over?
These trailers?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I know some of them.
Yes, because when we were, when we were doing um, when the county was letting us borrow their trailers, our pickup trucks would bring you another.
Any more questions?
Those crappy ones, those are the ones we get the clay up there.
Okay, next up is the hot water heater for the community center. Uh yeah, I guess y'all already saved the letter from uh, she was here, she's here, Ms. Teresa Plant. Uh seventy-seven thousand dollars. Uh we did do a little bit more research uh on here and had um Justin from Summer Utility Department and Mr. Jamie Wilson at Pittman Brothers, is that his name, Jamie Wilson at Pittman Brothers? Okay, and he looked at it and he went up there and they all got together and put their heads together, so less than three thousand. And I, and I gave y'all a copy of this and that, we can put this in, uh it'll take care of the sinks, hot water, and maybe if you're taking showers up there, maybe um two to three showers every once in a while. Now, you know, if you have a whole team that's gonna go in and out of showers, of course, the hot water's not gonna be, you know, there. But uh if you're having, and I just don't say that would take a lot of showers at the community center. So um I would say this would be efficient and it costs, you know, better than seven thousand. Um so, um but I wanted y'all's thoughts on it. We did uh get the hot water heater, take it on down there, but we didn't do anything uh unless y'all have any other thoughts. Uh Jamie can come put it in uh and uh take the other one out and um hopefully that, he thinks, Jamie Wilson also thinks, I meant to tell Justin to come, but uh from the Summer Utilities Department, but they think that will take care of the leak. There is a check valve on the side that is also leaking and it goes into a bucket, but Mr. Jamie Wilson, it pretty much is uh very confident that this will take care of that as well.
Did, did anybody look at like the tankless water heaters or?
Uh yes, we had some people look at that, which was Jamie again, Darryl Roberts and um, but they said that they figured that this was probably the best way to go. So I just went by Jamie, but if you want me to check on anything else, I can get somebody else to come up there. Cause Darryl Roberts came up there, uh Jamie Wilson and uh Justin from the Summer Utility. And I believe Kevin brushed it as well.
It's about hooking back to the existing pipe too.
Yes, that's correct.
With the tank of water heater, so maybe it's gonna be more difficult to do that too.
Yeah.
And cost too with it, so.
Thank you for that, I did, did weigh that out. So um.
So this one that we've had printed out here is a forty gallon.
We'll get a fifty, we got a fifty gallon right here. So we actually got the round instead of this one up here. This is just something that uh Mr. Jamie Wilson sent us, saying that this, this would work. But then when I was sending this one and um Chief Carr went to pick it up, we just made sure and Jamie Wilson said, yes, that would work as well. So we don't buy everybody before we pick it up. So, we all thank you. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Next up was um Jim Rittrobel, and of course, he has the flu, so, uh but but I wanted you to read these new building code ordinances and if you have any questions, um you wanna talk about it a little bit, Chief Carr, because he does have some insight on this.
I've argued this will get go. That if we have this, we'll get more points on our ISO. It's not win over, the only thing, if you do this, the Tennessee Home Builder Association is always five days. Your bigger cities has them, your smaller cities don't. It might hurt you on. You know, it might hurt you on some of your residential and one and two family dwellings if if you make it too strenuous, they might decide not to bill. We need to build a code, so I would, like I said, I've argued that can get go. Gonna put a whole lot more work on Jim, Jim will have to go to school and get certified in mechanical and plumbing, I think he's got some of it, not all of it.
But you did mention Darryl Roberts.
Yeah, well, now that's, that's just on the far side, Jim will have to do this on the building side.
Um and this is just something I wanted y'all to have and read on for January meeting, if that's something. Any questions in there? Okay, next up is uh.
Yeah, that's uh, our, our contract with uh TAC is who we purchase our gas from, it expires March thirty-first the next year. So that's a resolution you got right there, is basically allows you, allows us to continue purchasing gas at TAC so they can, you know, negotiate the best rates for our customers.
I'm gonna have to put that on the agenda for tomorrow. Any questions? The next one, I just put this in, on your packet, so you could just read about it. Um this is, I forgot where this is on, I'm so sorry, it's for tail, he's wanting to pursue for a liquor license. Um so I did put that in there, and I believe you'd already done one background on.
Yes, and I guess through the liquor license, he had, they have to do it different, he'd, they had sent Ms. Ann.
They did, they sent Ms. Ann.
Even a bigger background check, which is more stringent and desired, and it looked a whole lot better than the one I did, so.
And everything checked out and done everything, but I would, you know, we'll have to vote on it.
Is that the same, where is that at?
Down at, right at one forty-two, is that uh?
The alley or?
No, no.
No, eight sixty-one Mulberry Avenue.
Oh.
Across from AT&T.
Yeah, up on hill.
The one across the street. Oh, across the street from AT&T?
Yes.
Okay.
You just got a beer license maybe two months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's so bright.
Yes, I do.
Cigarette shop.
Yeah.
That smoke shop or whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
Y'all need anything else to look at or anything, 'cause I've got it all right here. Background check.
Everything checked.
Blowing. Just, just put that on the agenda to vote. Uh and another two things I just put in there, you have somebody, uh Mr. Pastor Shoemaker Maker who will come tomorrow, wants to speak in the meeting at the end. Um and then you have, um what I wanted y'all to also read about for January is the Gov Card. Um I had went around and talked to other towns and I think this would benefit us, um but I'm gonna need your thoughts on it and just see what you think. I'm sure you'll have questions. And basically what it is, is we'll be able to take credit cards at City Hall and then we will be able to, uh they can go online and they can pay like Park and Rec online, go ahead and, you know, just.
Sure.
Go home. Now, this is different from SUD, is that?
Well, the police department and the SUD already use Next Bill Pay.
Okay.
They're out of Atlanta and um, not Atlanta, Alabama. And um and they, it, it's the same thing where they link to, you can pay things online. They, do they pay y'all online or do they just pay it on site?
What, both?
Both, and the same thing with this.
Okay.
Next Bill Pay, and I can get you his contact information, cause his name is Chase Elmore with Next Bill Pay. They have been very good, their customer service is really, really good.
Make sure you've in on that to us, so we can look at it.
Yeah, and I'll get him to put it together, I mean, just get me some information about what you want it to do.
Okay.
They can link it to the city's website.
Okay.
Um and um and it has worked, it, I mean, we do between sixty and seventy thousand dollars worth of transactions every month at the utility department. And it is seamless, and then they, they use it as well.
The majority of our traffic tickets are paid through Next Bill instead of cash.
Well, that would be great, well, yes, and do that and send that to us so we can read about that.
I would highly recommend this, and they already have a re- a relationship with us, you know, because, because of us and the police department, so.
Sounds good, that, that works for me, just, I just think it's a service that we could offer.
Well, that company is the, is it per transaction or is it per percentage of transaction?
Yes.
Both?
Well, I mean, if it's a, a, a minimum amount, it is just a flat fee. On hours and then it's.
They're more like a service.
It's not a, and then after that, if there's a percentage, once it gets over a certain threshold.
Okay.
So it's the same thing this is?
Yeah, I don't even.
It's a flat rate and then over a certain amount, it's a percentage.
Yeah, and I'm sure it's probably pretty close to the same, I mean, I think they pretty much probably all kinda charge the same. Um I can get Next Bill Pay to put you a gather a packet uh to have to compare. Uh but they will link with, you know, they will, they will make it work with your website, uh cause that's where, how our customers do it. They go to our website and it takes with the Next Bill Pay.
That would be great.
Yeah, and then, you know, and then you also can come face to face and and come in here and and remember the card as well. It, it goes either way. They don't have to go online, they can come up here and take and give you the package as well.
And what do y'all think about that, I think that's great, come up to the, a little bit to the twenty-first century, you know?
Sounds good. We have a bit of property tax and everything.
You can, you can do whatever you want to, yeah, and and the, and honestly, um and I would, I'll talk with Ann, but honestly, with with us at the utility department, the fact that we do so many thousands and thousands of dollars of transactions a month, I said, I have a separate checking account that does nothing but catch credit card payments. And then, once a month, because we have it with gas and water and we have to keep those separate, and so, once a month, what I do is transfer the money out of that credit card account into the funds that it needs to be. So if you had that situation where you set up just a catch-all, not a catch-all, a, a, a checking account that did nothing but catch credit card transactions, then you would be able to run your reports and say, okay, this much goes to police revenue, this much goes to property tax, this goes to Parks and Rec, and you can track it and and it's easier to reconcile when it's not mixed in with your general fund, so.
So it's a, it's a.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, if you keep it out of your, it makes it easier to reconcile your, your general fund operations account when you don't have tons of credit card transactions that hit. Right now, it does have credit card transactions, but it's just a few, and they're all police, so it's, it's easy for her to pull those out. But if you have somebody that comes in and they have a, 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 a police fine and they wanna pay their property taxes and I signed my kid up for football.
Fine.
I mean, that's one transaction that they can do all at one time, but if it's just in this one account, then it's easier to, to separate.
Separate.
And a lot of times, I know it's harder up front, but say somebody comes back here and they wanna pay a wrecker bill and they don't have no money, but they do have a credit card. We will take their money, but it, but usually we're just sending fine money up there and we have to say, no, this is for a wrecker bill that goes into a different account. And I know that's an auditing issue, but.
Yeah.
A lot of times, people say, I ain't got no cash.
I know, I hear it all day long.
But we still.
I don't have any cash.
Yeah, but we still wanna take their money, cause they've got money. And I say, take their money, I know they don't want you to take their money, but take their money. Or we'll do a settlement on, somebody settles those, cause we seized a car and it's eight hundred dollars, take their money. If it's a debit card or a credit card, take their money. We can figure it out later on the accounting side, cause we know the money's going in the bank. We just gotta figure, we know we can figure out what account to put it in.
And and that's, it makes it easier on whoever's having to reconcile that bank account if the only thing that hits that account is credit card transactions. You know, cause that's the only thing you're having to fight in that, that, that account as opposed to everything else.
Cause Ms., cause Ms. Ann's, everything is hitting her account.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Just like today, I think we had a grant hit the account and she's saying, I think, I think, you know what this is for? It's for a grant reimbursement.
Right.
Cause, cause we, I think we've only got that one bank account, everything's hitting.
It is, it makes it, makes it so, so, so much easier.
But I just wanted to bring that up and see what y'all thought, how for January, might be something to note.
Sounds like a good idea.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This number eight, are we gonna just go in tomorrow night, blind it, cause we know what it's all about?
Well.
I mean, are we gonna talk about it, are we gonna?
Oh, yes, go ahead, you can talk about it, he talked to you.
It's the Christmas parade, is what he wanna know about. I told him it started before I was alderman.
What's he parade? For those who want to see the.
Number eight is. Number eight is Pastor Shoemaker from the Faith Baptist Church, wants to speak before in the town meeting, and it's about the Christmas parade, and he said he contacted all the aldermen and wanted to know our feelings, how did we feel about it and how did we get to that? And I said, well, we had someone, the pastor from Shawnee came, and he had the same concern and we wanted to, they wanted to know why we picked Sunday and said we was the only town, and I don't know if that's true or not, that's got Sunday, some of the others didn't have it, and I said, I don't know. But that's what it's, he's coming about, he wants us to explain why and when we do it and do we have to have it on Sunday?
Were you here on Sunday, the parade?
Yeah.
You saying we available here?
I seen it, but that ain't, that ain't what he's saying, I, I know, I seen it, I mean, there's a lot of people, I enjoyed it.
You know, Mr. Jeff Calley came and he voiced his opinion, so.
Well, he's someone, I'm, I'm just saying there was.
It was a lot.
How many people were in town, love, or the way to count that?
Miss, Miss Willie, I can tell you that, that when it happened that year, it was supposed to be on a Saturday. It had rained about like it had all last week, and it was so wet, we had all the Christmas trees and there was no way that we could line them because water was standing in Rockville Park.
We had all the Christmas trees and there was no way that we could light them because water was sitting in Palm Billy Park. There was no way we could light the trees or anything. So, the decision was made to move it over to Sunday. We called several of the local churches at the time, First Baptist Church being one, Lakeview, uh, the Church of Christ up here, First Christian. We called and talked with them and they, at the time, were doing all the little small groups and all. And so, they thought it would be a great idea to come and bring their small groups, fellowship. And at that time also, we were doing a Christmas story. And it's kinda ventured away from that just because people have so many other things to do and everything. But, and when we first started, we did, uh, Mayor Larry Smith came several times and read the Christmas story and we did that. We had churches involved giving away, uh, hot chocolate, um, candies, cakes, all kinds of things all over town. And it was, it was, it was made for a fellowship outreach. And that's what the reason, and then it worked so well that year that we just stayed on that Sunday because it was so hard to, to try and find another day that another town close to us was not having a parade. Because like Corinth and, you know, the, the other towns had their parades. And so, that's the reason that we have stayed.
And if I'm not mistaken, it was very well accepted.
It was very well accepted.
That it was on Sunday.
Yes, yes. All the local churches came, I mean, they were, they were all for it and, and they, you know, they, they were all about it.
They used it as an opportunity.
Yes, for outreach.
Yeah.
When, when Pastor Shoemaker...
Just agree that to me.
That was my response to him is, many of the churches here, I mean, even now, it doesn't seem as though they're lighting Main Street like they did the first couple of years as far as handing stuff out. But they're still doing active outreach events. And that's what I challenge Pastor Shoemaker to do is, well, come participate, bring your congregation and, and do something. I just had the thought just now, maybe if, if we do decide to keep it on Sunday, maybe we partner the McNair County Pastors Association with the Christmas Parade Committee.
Yes.
And kinda get some organization to it among all the churches so that you kinda got somebody represented maybe on each block. That way it, it stretches from the railroad tracks all the way down Main Street. You've got good saturation and everybody's doing something different.
I'm part of the ministerial line, I'm in town and I can say everybody's part of that, somebody wrote the name, so. Uh, one church that's not in town, so to speak, Curtis Hill Church of God of Prophecy, just outside of town. Up until this year, and they just couldn't this year because they had several people sick. They'd use it as a giveaway for coats. They had away several hundred coats every year.
Richie Horner, he did.
Did they do that this year?
Yes, they sure did.
'Cause everybody had some people sick and he was there.
They actually set up under the pavilion at the homeless market and gave away coats. And they had free hot chocolate. And so, I mean, there, there are several, you know, churches that participate and still, uh, First United Methodist last year, uh, was there to give out coffee and, and, and hot chocolate and all. You know, so, I mean, a lot of the churches use it, you know, for an outreach.
You know, and, and just my, my personal take on it, every church's number one charge should be to go. And what better opportunity to go than when you got the whole county in one spot at one time for a good cause?
Yeah, look, I'll tell you, my, my mom's an old school Pentecostal chap, her church is right here in town. She hates it. But now, she hates it 'cause she has to drive around half the way. But, uh, yeah, I mean, there's that in town.
I think, I think it could be even better if we could coordinate with the committee and with the ministerial alliance and kinda get some organization to who's doing what and where they're at and...
And in the past, we have reached out to the local churches and, and, and done that. Uh, this year, I'm, I'm not sure, I was in charge of one thing, so I took care of that. But I, I'm not sure who was, you know, in charge of the part of reaching out to the local churches if, if, you know, they wanted to come and set up or anything.
I think, well, like, like Russell said, I think maybe the best way to do it would be to go through the alliance and then everybody is on the same page and, you know.
I mean, I enjoyed the parade, I'm telling you. My opinion, I enjoyed the parade and I didn't have the data for me to say, this is why it changed. I will find out. And I said, in my opinion is, he said it had to direct traffic and had to do this, that one particular day. I said, well, now, if one Sunday gonna keep people going, hell, it's wrong. Just one day out of the year. So, you know, one day y'all be able to do something, one day. That's all we asked.
But that's the background, uh, why it was started.
He'll probably ask you tomorrow night. See, y'all got the data.
All right.
Well, good.
Anything else?
Parking rec board wanted to be put on the agenda, they wanna talk about something.
Parking rec board? And, and what is, are they gonna talk about? I'm sure you...
I, I don't know.
You don't? Parking rec board, it's your family. And how did they reach out to you about that?
They texted me.
They text you?
I told them to text you and said, just let her know it to me. Okay.
Ross, anything else? Anybody have anything?
I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for having the carpet cleaned. It was nice. I, I got, I was just, I was nervous. Grant, you're gone. Don't he look nice, John? He looks classy.
I got it.
What about the, uh...
I mean, personally, I, it's like we're talking.
What about the...
At least just clean it out.
Don't answer that.
Now, it's clean.
Uh, and you got the email up there from everybody, we're still waiting on some more info coming down? Did, uh, Godwin and Dogwin get back with you?
Well, that's the thing, they're not, they don't make any decisions.
Right.
They're waiting on y'all's decision.
Right.
Because they don't, they, and, and they don't, they don't care what the decision is. It, that's something that, um, that this board has to decide and with, you know, um, information from Terry and I think he was looking into some stuff. So, it, it really is a decision that y'all make, they just need to know what your decision is.
So, if we need to move forward tomorrow night, wouldn't it give Terry the authority to explore it?
Yeah, and I think he, I think he was contacting them to just get their side of the story.
Yeah.
Uh, just, and I think that there is probably a lot of, um, what's the word? A, a, a lot of moving parts in that. I don't know that it's c- cut and dry.
Yeah.
Um, but it is something that was in the contract, which the, the auditors said, hey, if we need, if, if you're not gonna pursue this, we need to know that you're not gonna pursue this and that there's a reason why you're not pursuing it.
Right.
Um, and, and so, I think, I think that's something that Terry is, should have some information about last, maybe tomorrow night.
Okay.
Um, and I did let the auditors know that we would be discussing it tomorrow night. It, there's, there's nothing that has to be resolved tomorrow night. They just need to know, oh, we're not pursuing this or yes, we are.
Yeah, when you just need to give Terry the authority to pursue any monies that may or may not be...
And, and it may be a situation where it's a wash with an outstanding invoice versus, you know, the liquidated damages. It may come down to that. Um, but they just need to know that it is being addressed. They don't care what the, the answer is, uh, because that's a management decision. But they need to know that everybody on this board is aware that that was in the contract and why. I know with us, when we have a USDA loan, they mandate that you enforce it. And which, so that's why it surprised me that, that the, uh, the grant administration people at the state wasn't mandating that you, you enforce it. So, um, it's, this needs to be addressed, it needs to be put out there, it needs to be, you know, they need to be called on the carpet about it. Uh, and, you know, if, if Cook Cogan was the one that decided, no, we're not doing it, well, they don't have the authority to say that.
Right.
The board has to say, yes, we're going to, or no, we are not because of this reason. It, it's not, they don't get to make that choice.
I'd like to move forward on that and just get a, a hard line drawn moving forward, maybe we can get this project back on schedule.
Yeah.
Which I had, we did receive the, uh, other three hundred and thirty thousand dollars today.
Good deal.
So, that, that's been, um, transferred, um, A H, state of A H, then?
A C H.
A C H, I'm sorry, back for it. Uh, so, we, we do have, um, I was told, um, by the state two weeks ago that it would take us anywhere from forty-five to sixty days to get the new contract, um, back in so that we could, um, start back on the project. So, hopefully not after the first of the year. And at this point, we have forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars left to finish the project.
Can I ask another question? Me being the newest alderman, each year we accomplish things. How did we, how, how did we do in the past when a new man came in with projects we done back when they was there? Do we pile up on them, do we finish them? Do we just let them sit there and grass grow around them? What do we do?
So, it's been a town project when the next administration, they just get them going.
So, we ain't, yeah, but we ain't keep going.
Are you talking about the North Park or the Patriot Park?
Well, them and Mr. Powell's house, just sitting there, we paid money for it.
Are you talking about the house next to, to...
The community center. So, what are we gonna do with it? We talked it about three months ago, about asbestos and it's gonna cost a lot. Uh, are we gonna just...
You wanna put that on the agenda to...
I think we need to do something with it. Y'all don't think we do?
So, agenda is your house next?
We'll talk about it.
To the community center.
We'll talk about it tomorrow.
So, you can't talk about it tomorrow?
Well, you can talk about it, I'm gonna go in tomorrow.
We can, we can get close.
Oh, we gotta find out.
Oh, I know you can't tear it down, I mean, but I just wanted, how do I...
No, they do. I spoke to, I spoke to, um, Ripley about the asbestos situation in their house and he said it wasn't that, now, this is what he told me. He said it wasn't that big of a deal. The situation, the situation that we ran into before, it was different because it was a commercial property. But residential asbestos is on a whole different scale than, than commercial products. So, that's what he told me.
So, the man next door that wanted to tear it down free for the lumber, we stopped him?
No, we didn't stop it.
Well, he ain't doing nothing.
No, he, he's waiting on us to do it.
Right.
So, if that's the way you're gonna go, I'll put it on the agenda. What is, what is your thoughts?
Play a part in that, will it help?
It would, but that would be a legal question for Terry, 'cause he gets hurt tearing it down and he doesn't have insurance.
Right.
Then he comes back, 'cause it's a... He'll be a man to bring you house.
Well, we said, we, we said that to him.
Whoa.
We said that to him, that Terry would, would take care of it. Sound like Terry got a lot to do.
Yeah, he is, well, that's...
But do you want me to just...
Let's just get his, ask, ask him a question.
All right.
Yeah. I, I'm just concerned, I mean, it's just money.
So, okay, so that's two questions for Terry, all right?
Yes.
You got it. Anything else?
That's all for me.
I'm in.
All right.